All right, I'd like to recontinue the regular meeting. Next up we have on the agenda, consider resident proposal for investigation. So Mary, you have this?
Yeah, this is not something I drew up, but it was actually someone, the resident, asked, I think you remember, Mr. Guevel attended one of our meetings and asked about the comment on the independent investigation that was brought up earlier. He sent this to me. He asked me to put it on the agenda for discussion. To be honest, I delayed it for several months and then I thought, well, I think it's best to just put it on and have the council look at it, review it, decide, make a decision, and then, you know, we can move on. But I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. He does suggest an enormous amount of money be allotted for the investigation, and I think it's $150,000, which I understand, I know I found to be exorbitant, but I didn't feel right putting it off again without presenting it as I had promised to do. So, not much more I can say other than...
I mean, I think the $150 jumped out of me and said, whoa. And I mean, to me, I mean, investigation, we should be paying for investigation, I think. Personally, it should be an outside agency, whether it's the sheriff's or Fort Washington or...
We were to pay for it, right?
State Attorney General or whatever, you know. They have investigators and they do whatever they do. I mean, I can't see that we, as a village, take on that.
I think, now, I think, correct me, it's been a lot of months since I read it, to be honest with you. I think he is talking about hiring an outside firm, which is why it's costing, it would cost this much.
Right, I'm saying that's an outside firm, I'm talking about, you know, an outside agency that would investigate, whoever would investigate that, whether it's the sheriff's department or the state attorney general's office.
Oh, you're saying that we could use a public agency to do that.
Which I would want, I think we'd have to go to them and present them and they'd say either, we're not interested in it, or, yeah, maybe it's something that we'd like to work out or something, but I think we have to...
And then, what's the actual complaint? That's the other issue.
Well, he outlined so many things that he felt should be investigated, and I'm sort of letting the document speak for itself.
Is that under background? Which corner am I looking at?
I think it's under scope.
Scope?
And...
Well, one we can probably cross off right away when you talk about scope is the illegal meetings, because we're going through that right now through an actual legal process. So that could be removed, wouldn't you guess it? Because, I don't know, or is he looking at illegal meetings since when? I mean, the scope is usually a timeframe, or...
I think, if I remember correctly, it was somewhere between, okay, I'll have to find it.
He separated them, but I'm reading it as sort of an all encompassing, turn someone loose to, I guess, investigate everything. I mean, it's like everything on here.
Yeah, well, it's not how they operate. You have to give them specific, just investigate, like, you have to give them specific directions and accusations and, you know, facts, and so they know who to interview, who to talk to, what they're looking for. Like, an investigation is too broad of a term. You're not going to find anyone to say, we'll do an investigation.
Well, we don't want to, to use a quote, you know, we don't want to have a witch hunt.
I think his idea, like, when he spoke to me about it and gave it to me, he said that ideally, the council would go through the items and select whether or not they felt, number one, obviously, the investigation was warranted, and two, which items they felt were important to investigate. And so, yeah, that was what, that was what his general request was.
So, when he came up and spoke, obviously, we have a policy that we don't want to respond, but he spoke about where is it all at and stuff, and I will disclose to you all now that I did reach out to the, an officer at Weddington, and we had a long conversation, and I was explaining to him about issues with, we had complaints earlier about election, mid-whatever it was, some wrongdoings with the elections, and I think, Kim, you reached out to the election. What did they tell you?
They said that's not anything that they investigate. They don't do anything on a local level.
So, we took that, and I reached out to the officer, had a long conversation with him, and I didn't have the actual statutes that were broken. I says, all I'm doing is following the direction of what, we reached out, we believed it was some election issues, so we reached out to the election. Election group at Raleigh said, no, this is a local issue. So I said, so that's where we're at right now. He says, well, he literally said to me, well, this sounds like a bunch of spilled milk and crime. So, he was not encouraged. Now, if we go to him with specifics, I think that holds a little more weight than just me calling him and saying, so it's not like we haven't done anything. I said, look, because we've gotten complaints from residents, not just Mr. Guevel, but also other residents that have concerns, and you bring that up to them, and they want specifics, they want laws that are broken, I think to Melanie's point is, you can't just throw out anything out there. So if we want to go through this and say, okay, campaign finance, I mean, is there, is there some sort of allegation out there that some campaign finance was broken?
You say Board of Elections, you're using the state Board of Elections. They said local. Does that mean that we should, they said we should go through your county Board of Elections?
They, they were supposed to do some research and get back to me, and they never did. And so, at this point, this is what...
Yeah, because I mean, I can see...
And obviously, they have, they've had a lot on their plate with what's been going on recently, so I don't think they were really interested in talking to me. They were very nice, but they weren't very forthcoming with information, so...
You need county board to say, under the same...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm more than happy to call them again, but I kind of, you know, I think it would be more beneficial if we go as a body than as an individual.
Yeah, like, special use permits, building permits, and other such actions by the mayor, council staff, village, legal council, and individual board, I mean, what does that even mean? Special permits? Building permits?
Am I not the only, I think I'm the only one that pulls permits. I don't know what that's about.
Honestly, I...
Anything to talk to us about? I mean, I, so it's just so vast, and it's, to your point, it's like, unless you are honed in on this took place, or we believe it took place, then it's like, okay, so if we want to, and I don't know if we'll get through it tonight, given how late it is, but if we want to go through this list specifically and say, okay, let's focus on this, because I think this was brought up and this is something fair. I'm open to any one of these. I look through them all, and I'm clean as a whistle on any one of them. They want to do all their investigation, they want, they're not going, there's nothing that they're going to learn, but it's just, it's almost like a, they're throwing it out there to see what sticks, you know? There's a saying, show me the person and I'll find you the crime, you know, or say, you know, point to me the person and I'll find what the crime is, because, but it's just, you're throwing mud on the wall. But a lot of these I would throw out almost immediately because of just, I don't remember, council members' abuse of position and/or authority. What does that even mean? Abuse of position in what specific? That's so vague.
That nobody's going to investigate that.
Yeah, I mean, what's...
Not just, I've said it for months, that I'm all for an investigation, but...
Investigation what?
Well, I mean, there are some things, but I don't know who to get to do them. That's, that's the biggest problem, is I don't know who's going to do it after we've done, reached out and talked to some people. Not to say that I don't think that we should continue to talk about this, because...
I mean, my mind too, is that if you have an investigation, and that's why I'm saying it needs, I would think it needs to be done by like Sunday's state attorney general. Somebody would have the authority then, if they find something, to do something. Because if we find an investigation and they find something that comes back to us, what do we have the authority to do? I mean, it's not like, you know, if they came back with something that was criminal, I mean, you know, it would have to be, you'd want the investigation to be done by the people that could deal with that.
Yeah.
In fact, there was something like that.
Agreed.
That hire our own...
A law firm.
What are they going to do, really, what they could do with it?
Years ago, there was an investigation, I think with the city of Monroe, that maybe Parker Poe or someone did. I just remember there were like, you know, people recording conversations, and there were concerns about various things, but I, I mean, criminal charges or anything came of that. I don't really know what the purpose was, other than it was a little...
I'm saying, some of these, some of these things in here would technically almost be criminal charges.
Right.
I mean, there's a bunch of them that are possibly more criminal charges.
All I can say is, I know that, you know, the idea of investigations was mentioned. Then, as you all know, I said, well, if we're going to do an investigation, it should be something that the, either the whole council does it, or not, one or the other. And my guess is that, in that vein, this is why this was provided, because I said, well, if we're going to investigate something, then the entire council should be behind that. Otherwise, it doesn't deserve to be on a council agenda. And so, that's the next thing that happened, was he provided this to me. I did not put it on the agenda, and then he came to speak of it, and after that, asked me if I would present it. I think narrowing the scope, just broadly, would have to be a requirement if we do anything at all, and I'll be honest, that the cost of it at this point just seems exorbitant to me.
It's actually one cent of our budget, of our five cents, on something that, there's not one specific thing in it, it's like, okay, was it on the mayor, on any of the council individual, and what they did? It's so vague, and again, one is already being addressed with illegal meetings, but if you want to open it up to the whole thing, feel free to do that. I mean, we've already submitted through public records requests, all documents that relate anything to the town since, you know, but if you want to go back further, I guess I can go back further, but it becomes so vague, so big, and we can get it. And I'm sure there are some things in there specific.
Because without specifics, it's basically a fishing expedition.
Right.
No, just see, if you come up with, you know, throw it in, see what bites, you know, what hits, you know, somewhere.
So, I guess, if anything, and I, I don't know, I guess if anything, I try my best to understand whether, I don't know if you know the argument, is it the top on the toothpaste or what's the toothpaste? So, the underlying message is probably that there has been residents, right, who are concerned about actions, and so I try not to look at this and take it as objective. But is there something more that we can do to put residents at ease with our actions? Is there, can we put out, I don't know, more bulletins, more communications, something? I'm just throwing it, things at the wall now, too, that just say, is there anything that we could do? Let's forget the document, and I'm just thinking about this right now. Should we forget the document for a minute and perhaps think about the underlying cause of it? Because, you know, Mr. Guevel does represent a lot of residents. Is, and then, and I don't know the answer, is there something, is there an anxiety, or is there a need that we're, that leadership's not fulfilling that we should consider, that might allay some of the concerns? And I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, to me, the remedy people have is the ballot box.
Yeah.
That's the remedy, I mean, you know, it's, the thing, I don't know that we could put out anything that's going to, no matter what we put out, it's going to allay some people's fears and say, some people, it's a cover up or, I don't know, you know, doing that is really kind of, that there's anything we could really put out there to allay everybody's fears and make everybody happy. I think, again, you know, that they'll have the opportunity, the ballot box, to say what they, you know, what they feel, you know.
I mean...
To spend, you know, I mean, I just get, the money is, is real, isn't it? You know, a golden amount to even think about, and with no specific allegations against any particular, specific person, just making it, again, so basically a fishing expedition, you're making it against the council and the mayor, staff, the legal council, I mean, it's like, you know, what do you, what does that accomplish?
Yeah, I mean, like, if I, if I'm just going to have this potentially illegal and/or conflicted meetings between mayor, council staff, legal council, and individual board leadership positions with outside parties. If, I would say, if the community can come forth with specifics of, I saw, I witnessed three councilmen talking, or, you know, I have emails, or I have text messages or something, or I know there are, there's an allegation that's specific to that, then they need to come forward and say it, because usually when there's allegations of this, that usually it goes through a court process and, you know, I mean, or it goes through an investigation, but if they are legitimate and stuff, a lot of this can be determined by just looking at, you know, the stuff that we have to provide anyways, through public records requests, you know? Do you see us on an email all at the same time? Do you see us on a text all at the same time? If that's happening, it would be with what we presented to, in the public records request, because all that stuff is there, but it's, it's just so vague, and I am not opposed to any of it, because any, if any of this is happening, it should be addressed, but it's just not specific enough. So I would encourage anyone, including him, to come forth and say, okay, and I know there's one, the one got upset, they came here, they were very specific. It was about, we talked, we were talking about sunshine list. Well, and I think, Robert, you had mentioned, well, I got this, it was on the sunshine list, and we're like, well, everybody has a sunshine list. Well, I don't have the sunshine list, and so that was a specific thing, and we heard from that person, she was very upset, and that's, I think she went all the way to the sheriff, and then the sheriff said, well, I'm not going to take this from an individual, but if there's something from the council as a whole, and they want us to investigate it, that they will do it, but coming from an individual, but if there's something there that we all think is, is worth looking into, I have no problem looking into any of this, but to the point of $150,000 and have a reporting system every month, I mean, we'd almost have to have a whole department set up to, you know, oh, here's what's happening with the latest investigation and stuff. I mean, it's, it can get a little bit carried away. I just see nothing in there very specific of what he's asking, and I appreciate what he's saying, and I appreciate his concerns, but if he has something specific, and a lot of it, quite frankly, starts with misinformation that's given out there, whether it's in the election, accusing us of being developers and stuff like that. It's just a statement, has no valid, you know, I mean, you know, developer friendly, I heard, I heard, I heard I was a developer at one point. All of it is untrue, but people can say whatever they want, but if they have specifics and they want to accuse me, or any of us, of doing something wrong that's against what we, you know, what our roles are here, then, then have them come forward with it. But it, again, starts with, you know, I mean, there's back and forth, the accusations of wrongdoings and stuff. I mean, we're, again, we're going through it right now, but if there's something else, I would certainly like them to take that, or I basically hope this message gets back to them. It didn't go unheard, I did reach out to the officer, he was basically saying, you need to come with me with specifics, and the whole board needs to come, and I'm totally open to that.
I mean, I have no issue with an investigation, just with the way it's laid out here, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't, I don't see that it's possible to even do it in this kind of manner, you know? Again, I would certainly rather find out if it can be done, if we have specific allegations that would go to the state attorney general's investigators, or, you know, sheriff's investigators, Board of Elections investigators, but, you know, just to throw out, all these things, again, to me, it's a, they're all basically, look like a fishing expedition, that you're just throwing, throwing things out there and seeing if something, if you catch something, I don't know. But I think the, any amount of time that would, anybody that's going to do this, whether it's a law firm or whatever, the amount of time that would take to do all this investigation, and, you know, be able to get all the information they needed to do it, would be, and would probably put the stuff on staff again, because they'd probably be public records requests and everything, again.
But you don't have to go to a private group for this. It's, county sheriff would be willing to take it on if there's legitimate cause for moving forward on it.
Well, the reality is, a lot of this stuff is public record, and just...
Absolutely.
Having the tenacity to request it and then go through it, and put it together.
Right, so they, so basically, they want us to kind of police ourselves, we're going to submit all this stuff to everybody and have an investigator through it and find out if there any sort of connection and stuff. Again, it's so vast, so big, and you'd be investigating as long as we were all in office and stuff. If they were, could hone in on anything specific, I would be all, all in on anything they can potentially think of that would be specific, dates, times, what we did wrong and stuff, and, and be open to any of that, and I'm on record now saying that, you know, let's do it, but let's not get carried away by hiring a separate group. It's going to cost one cent of the five cents we're charging our residents for taxes, and then find out what, it's just the next point, a fishing expedition, and we never really come up with anything. I'd like to see a little more specific on this. That's just me, but, Robert?
No, because I mean, I don't need to... Yeah, like you said, if you do have a, somebody look into it, and they find some kind of, something like this, if they don't have the ability to, you know, criminally or whatever, you know, how illegally do something about it, it comes back to us, and we really can't do it. I mean, you really can't do anything, because you're elected officials, you, so again, it's that, if you want a ballot box...
You have no power, you know...
You can censure somebody, you can censure someone, so which means nothing, you know, or it comes down to, when the elections come, the other person, you know, they don't get elected again, maybe, or whatever. So I don't, I don't know. I'm not quite sure what, you know, this really gets, or how it...
Whenever you're done, I think we all agree, we'd cooperate with anyone that wanted to investigate us, as long as it's somebody with authority, spending 150 grand, have someone do an investigation, just to turn it over to the bureaus or departments that we already pay tax dollars for. That group is, they're going to turn around and do their own investigation.
Right.
So they're going, they're not just going to take, you know better than I do, right? They're not just going to take that information at face value, so I, you know, I'll cooperate with anything, but I don't see spending 150 grand on it.
I think I spoke already, so...
Yeah, well, I think your vote was just to present what was, I mean, was that it?
Yeah, well, maybe, I don't know, Kim, I was waiting.
No, I mean, I think $150,000 is crazy. That's just, yeah, that's excessive, but I'm fine if we want to all look over this and talk about it again in the work session. I mean, I'm all for going to somebody, some...
As a group.
Group, as a body, and saying, hey, look into whatever we say, look into. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it's, I mean, I've said that for a while now, so we all want to, like, mull it over and talk about it again at the work session, I think that's a, I mean, we're doing this for almost...
Some of this is family disputes, it's family fighting, is what I'm saying here, which we can work out amongst ourselves.
I will, may, oh, sorry, I'll say one last thing. It's actually something you said once to me that I thought was poignant. Happens to be over the open meetings case, so please don't take that out of it, but it was more the sentiment, that government should, by the same token, small or large, if they feel or see that something is not necessarily going smoothly, then they should be willing to look internally, right, us as a body, and say, look, is this going as well as it should, or what can we do to improve that? That said, I think that we kind of do that, we have gotten better at that. I'm just going to throw that out there as something for us, perhaps, if nothing else, I'm trying to see what this could prompt us to do, because obviously, spending that kind of money, the scope, is not something I don't think this council is going to follow up on. My guess is, you know, a, but on the, by the same token, what can I take away from this? Maybe on occasion, to take the opportunity, whether it's at retreats or with this list, and ask if we're doing everything that we can to be sure that we're above reproach. And so, I ask myself that all the time. And I guess personally, I'll just say, that is when I say, look, I would prefer, I always prefer to take a criticism, including my own criticism, and try to turn it into a task. So if I have an issue with contracts, or the way seeing things aren't right, I would prefer then to put forward a policy, put it on the table, discuss it, and close that hole. The same reason I might talk about, you know, other issues that we've come up across, like the engineering contract. If, so, as long as we're always reflecting, and perhaps, if nothing else, this causes to do that, and thinking about ways to improve, that seems to be the essential point that I'll take away from this, whether it comes back or not.
Well, I'd just like to say, I hope Mr. Guevel's listening to the recording or whatever, but it's, it's not like this fell on deaf ears. We, you reached out to the election, Board of Election, and when there was the issue, when that was brought up, of election violations, there were some other issues that came in. I also talked to the individual, and I think it, it has a little more weight, instead of one individual going, whether it's a citizen, or even an individual as a council member or mayor, going to them. It should be as a body, but let's figure out what specific that we're, what wrongdoing is being accused, what, what is the, what are we being accused, if any, of it, are you being accused of what wrongdoing is happening? And then, is that, is that warrant an investigation? It didn't fall on deaf ears, it just, the person that I reached out to at, at Weddington, he's with the sheriff's department, he just said, it sounds like a lot of spilled milk. He wanted a lot more information. I thought, well, we'll eventually be talking about this, because I saw it coming up, and I thought, well, that's going to be our opportunity, and I know we've tabled it a few times, so I'm glad we're talking about it.
I mean, I just, again, I just feel that anything, anything that we would pick out would have to be something that has either criminal liability or civil liability, some kind of liability, because else it'll just come back to us, and again, we can only, we can't, we don't do anything to, you know, we don't like what Robert did with talking to somebody, we could say, don't do that again, but we can't force it, we can't stop it, we can censure him, maybe, at worst, and if he talks to him again, there's nothing we can do about it, you know? I mean, so it's, I would think you'd want, the scope would be things that if you're going to present them, they're going to be stuff that would be able to be acted upon by even a sheriff or a state attorney general or a Board of Elections, somebody would, you know...
I mean, it sounds like we're all kind of saying the same thing, and I like Mary's point of some reflection. So, do we want to reflect on this and talk about it again in the work session? And it may just be that we're good, we, you know, we've all talked about it, we've thought about it, and we're going to move on, we're going to pick some stuff. I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we're going to make a decision right now.
I think we, we need to, whoever is looking, whatever they're looking at scope, you have to then have some kind of...
I agree.
Specific thing that they're going to say, this is, and why we need to do a investigation.
So that's why we think about it, and then we can talk about it again at the work session.
Because, I mean, then you can still go to whatever agency, and they may look at it and say, well, we don't want...
Yeah, of course.
Stuff, we're not going to get involved.
I think, absent an allegation that some crime has been committed or has occurred, any police agency is not going to be interested. Like, I think you have to have specific, you know...
Yeah, if you broke a rule, if you broke a rule, like, and I know I've been, I've been accused in the past of talking to a developer, but that happens to be a rule in the Village of Marvin, that you're supposed to bring somebody else in.
That's what criminal offense is.
Exactly, so it's like, what are you going to, you're going to spend all that money? Oh, he broke a village rule and stuff. I mean, I mean, even, but I'm telling you, it never happened, but it's just kind of, that's what you would be accused of, and then at the end, what is the punishment? Is stuff that's, okay, you broke a, you censure them to a point?
Again, it would be, nobody's going to take, I don't know, any, any police agency or enforcement agency is going to take anything that you talked to, to a guy and it was against our rule. I mean, it would have to be something like, you talked to him, and you took a $30,000, you know?
Right, right, yeah.
Thing from him, you know, or something like that.
Exactly, and that's happened in the, in the, in this area, so, like, it doesn't happen.
Something like that, then, yeah, then they would, they would look at it, but if you just go over to them and say, well, he was talking to, yeah, we don't, that's against our thing, and they'd say, well, huh.
So do we, so do we want to do anything with this?
I'd like to at least open it up back to either Mr. Guevel, since he wrote this, took the time to write it, and say, if you have specifics, you would like us to, I mean, specifics, or anyone else out there in the community that has specifics or concerns, then let us know what they are, and we can take them up individually as a group, and then we can direct staff to say... then we can direct staff to say, look, council's come to me and suggesting X, and can you look into it and stuff?
And you have to provide us with his evidence, or, you know, at least some sort of evidence, 'cause that would have to, again, be presented to whatever agency's gonna look at it or think about looking at it, 'cause again, they may look at the evidence that he gives us and say, that's not evidence, that's not good enough, we're not gonna be involved with.
Okay. Anything else for anyone else on that? We don't, we kinda have direction on that, I mean, as far as what, we're not, we don't need a motion to do anything on that, do we?
Are we putting it on the work session or not?
I mean, we can, we can put it on the work session to see, and give them time to come up with something, or, hey, I guess it can come up anytime, but we'll leave it open for the next work session or next regular meeting. Happy to discuss anything that they specifically come up with.
Is that unanimous consent?
The catch, Barbie, yes, I believe it is.
Actually, peripheral question. I know you, we had a retreat, but are we thinking about building another one? Or are you starting consideration of it?
For what?
Of having a retreat with full quorum or whatever?
If we can go skiing or go to the beach or something, maybe.
There'll be an investigation.
Yeah, now there'll be an investigation.
No, I was just wondering if there were, I'm just throwing, not so much this, but whether there, it would be, I don't know, I don't really know what I'm thinking.
I'm a no on a retreat. I'm a no.
I was just thinking that as I was putting it out there.
It's gonna be Saturday, you know?
I could say something, it would be nice.
All right, let's go to village hall.
Let's go to village hall. No, I mean, if you want, bring it up, if you wanna put it up for discussion since it's not on the agenda, you can always add it to the work session.
No, I promise pulling it up, and so what happens with the depth of that is...
Okay. Next up, we have update on village hall.
And I don't really have a whole lot to report. We're following the timeline as established in the last meeting that we passed out, so we're on board to do the RFPs. We actually did an RFP change, I'm sorry, a extension to the original timeline to reflect your motion at the last meeting to extend it, I think the RFP process three weeks. So they will go out, they went out actually Monday. We had a pre-bid meeting on Friday. We had four vendors in attendance, a slew of them that's either called or emailed between now and then, so...
Do we have to have them? Oh, good.
So those bids should be received back by April 1st, the bid opening will be on April 1st, so we will know more.
I think that's the public event, correct?
Correct. That's all I have to report.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But that's, I don't have that one with me, but that was in my council comments, yes, I was gonna, I was gonna...
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, trust me, I got you. So you didn't have anything else?
That's nice.
Okay, I'm just gonna put this out there, just so you guys know, I did my own, I shared this with you earlier. It's not good news, but it is news. This was in Union County. New town hall for Stallings is on the way.
Stallings.
Stallings, Stallings, Stallings. So I reached out to them, and it talks about it's gonna be over two million dollars. So I talked to...
It's two buildings, though.
Right, I know. Talked to Chris Easterly, town engineer. Total package is three point one million dollars for the two buildings. One of the buildings, one of the buildings, which is just a civic building, is eight hundred thousand dollars. The other building...
What's a civic building, like a...
What, just for civic use, I just for, like, pray, like a building like this where it just be for activities, I guess.
We're going up for bid, why are we...
I'm just, I'm just preparing us for this, this is, I could use this, this is important, because I wanna just, I mean, I think it is important, but I did reach out to them. Fifty-seven hundred square feet, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
What is it?
Fifty-seven hundred square feet.
Fifty-seven hundred?
Is what they're building, I did the specifics. Their bid was two point three million dollars.
Was their budget two point three?
The total project is, I thought the, yeah, total project's like...
Three point one.
Two nine? Three point one, we borrowed.
Yeah, we had eight hundred thousand dollars, so, I mean, I'm just, we don't, we're gonna get the bids by the end of the, we're gonna get, I don't know if they have pictures in here.
Is there a picture?
I don't know, they may, they have a lot of things, but they're breaking ground, so it's, it's, it's not encouraging, because it's over four hundred and three dollars a square foot is what it comes down to.
Well, let's just see what happens.
We will know on April 1st.
All right, all right, so I'm just preparing the council for that, so I did, I just thought it was interesting, I thought, oh, they're doing exactly what we're doing.
Is that fifty-seven hundred for one building?
Yes. There's seventy-five hundred, when you read the article, seventy-five hundred between the two buildings, but I specifically called the engineer, Chris Easterly?
Easterly, yeah.
Okay, and I talked to him at length today, and he said, no, the total thing is three point one, two point three goes, I said, how long, how big is the town hall? He said fifty-seven hundred square feet. And the other one was, he said, came in at eight hundred thousand, that was two hundred and twenty-six hundred square feet for the civic building.
Uh, what is it?
Twenty-six hundred dollars? I mean, twenty-six hundred square feet, eight hundred thousand, I don't know what that is, comes out to.
Isn't that just a shell?
I think it's just a shell is what it is, a civic building, but the actual town hall is two point three, fifty-seven hundred, and that's, I think, where are we at? Around fifty-five on ours?
No.
Yes, fifty...
We're four thousand heated, we're one, there's storage above, so if you, if you were to heat everything, we'd be five thousand square feet.
Okay, so four thousand?
Even the civics, there was three hundred and seven dollars a square foot.
Yeah, four thousand times...
Three hundred and seven square foot.
In two weeks, you will have your answers.
I know, I'm just, I'm just getting us mentally prepared, I don't know.
I just, I know I've mentioned this before, every time Joe says it's gonna cost double what we think it is. If a bid comes in at one point five, and our budget is under a million, we're not, we don't have to take it, right?
No, correct.
Right. I, I agree, I agree. I, I just, yeah, I'm just making a comment, okay? I'm saying I'm right, because we're, I'm anxious to see what the bids come out.
I'm looking for positive Joe, give me positive Joe.
You know what, I wish I had positive news in common. In fact, I called them trying to get positive news, going, who are you using as a builder? And then when I saw the four oh three number, I thought, that's a little steep, so...
Were the contractors that came in, were they, generally speaking, the big, like, the guys that build giant commercial buildings, or little guys like me? Little guys like me are gonna come in closer to our budget.
Let's hope they know how...
Now you have to get them to write a news article, so you can bring it.
Because it's a bid, you know, if they're just throwing it at the wind.
Maybe if nothing else, it lets them know that we're not gonna accept a crazy bid like this, you know?
In the pre-bid meeting, do they know that we don't have to accept? In other words, there's no, you get a couple guys, and this would be, I would hope would be illegal, but if you get some guys colluding and saying, hey, I'm gonna come in at this number, you come in at this number, that would be bull, because we don't have to take any of them.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
You got me all anxious there, John.
All right, I'm just, I'm just, the number's gonna... Review action items.
Are we done?
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
It's ten o'clock.
It looks, it looks so long.
She wanted to be here, so, great. Okay.
Is there any other, I mean, that wasn't really an update, that was, you made that statement, is there anything?
No, she, she gave her update.
She was done, yeah, you didn't have much.
I guess I got slightly off.
And it happened to be on village hall, so that's why I was giving my update on village hall.
I knew you did that, 'cause it was village hall.
Okay.
Oh, you know what it was? So we, we tabled the right, the resolution, road maintenance resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
And the twenty-twenty contracts.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because she didn't have all the latest information.
Oh, you tabled that on the...
I tabled the twenty-twenty contracts on accident, so just letting y'all know, the intent to meet the policy that we have right now is, is there, 'cause I've got it in your agenda packets, accidentally tabled it, but it's there. I'll put it on the work session. I'm supposed to notify you all within sixty days of the budget of all contracts that are...
Well, you've notified us, it's in our packet.
I'll put it on the work session, just to notify you.
I know, I know, I have questions for...
As long as you need an action, like, see, in the packet, I assume you want an action.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe we settled this, and maybe we answered this, but we had eight hundred and ninety thousand budgeted for village hall.
Don't quote this, but I think it's eight sixty now.
Whatever, that, that...
We're back to the village hall.
And then we did have a certain amount budgeted for furniture for the new village hall.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I think Nick was saying that he thought we did have it somewhere.
Yeah, I'm saying, I thought we also had a certain amount budgeted for, you know, no, like, audio visual stuff, you know, whatever.
I thought we did too.
You know, for the, for the meeting room and stuff, and I thought that was...
I thought we had more than eight hundred grand in the, in the budget.
Was it in your old budget?
You go ahead, Barbie, you may remember better than I do.
So in the action, capital...
Because Brian was gonna give us the quotes for the...
Yeah, the previous budget, I mean, you know, maybe two years ago or whatever.
See, I remembered that, I mean, then, of course, I wasn't really involved in it anymore, but I remember way back when we were certain...
So when we said, you know, eight hundred and sixty was the town hall just a shell, or, you know, the building, and then if it was another, you know, a hundred thousand for furniture, or a hundred thousand for, you know...
There was a time the dirt was separated out too.
Yeah, that's true.
The site work was separate, is that no longer the case?
Yeah, because there was something about free dirt somewhere.
Yeah, there was that whole free dirt thing, yeah.
The what?
Free dirt.
The free dirt.
There's free dirt somewhere.
Yeah, there was free dirt.
So I can pull the character.
But there was a number for moving, you know, the actual site work.
Well, we have...
How about I throw this out, actually, 'cause I was thinking about this thing. Say we get a crazy bid like this, and it's double what we think, maybe you go back to the church here, and you say to them, we want a ninety-nine year lease, and you, you offer to go in there and take our existing town hall that we have and, and create right next to here, do whatever you can, and spend the money into a ninety-nine year lease.
Feels like you're trying to get us off that corner, aren't you?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna spend two million dollars on that corner, I guarantee you that. I'm not gonna vote for it, maybe you would.
You do understand building a town hall on that corner, or building a town hall on this piece of land is gonna cost the same.
I, I, not if you're breaking, if you have an existing land that they're willing to lease it to you for ninety-nine years, it's gonna be a lot less.
We already have the land.
Right, I know we have the land over there, but I'd rather see no building on there and do, like we talked about, and I suggested it earlier, is just do those weekend where it's a destination point, acoustic concerts...
So you don't want town hall on the corner?
No, I'm saying, if it's two point three million dollars?
But if it's two point, now, follow me.
Okay.
If it's two point three on that dirt, granted, there's a little bit of some trees and some grading to be done, it's gonna be two point three on this dirt, or that dirt, or the dirt over there.
Not necessarily, if you're taking an existing building and you're just, you're adding whatever you need to, or you blow it out and you create something, and you do a lease on it, so...
The lease has nothing to do with anything, because we already have the land.
Why, I agree, I agree.
We're talking bricks and sticks here.
I'm just saying, it says two point three is gonna be, we're not even close to having that in the budget, so may delay, is what I'm saying.
Yes, wait till we get a bid.
Yeah, we can spend two point three, I think, we're not gonna spend two point three.
To go back to Nick's point, though, I think we talked a little bit about this. I do remember at one point, though, because we were not spending, for example, furniture, we were, obviously, we haven't invested in any furniture for this village hall, the idea was let that accumulate, and that's sort of the budget when we have the new village hall. So instead of building in furniture, for example, into that budget, it should really be an operating expense. And it was at one point, correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm testing my memory here, in the budget way back twenty thirteen or whatever, when we were looking at this, so there was like forty thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars for furniture, and it was set aside.
So probably what happened during that time is y'all created a capital project ordinance during that time, y'all said it was gonna, I'm just gonna use arbitrary numbers here, it's gonna cost five hundred thousand for construction, it's gonna cost a hundred thousand for AV, it's gonna cost a hundred thousand for the grading and site work.
Right.
And you come up with, with all of these numbers, and it equals nine hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's what you put into your capital project ordinance. More than likely, that's what happened, so I can tell you what's in the capital project ordinance now that remains, was like the eight sixty-four. How that's broken down, I don't really know, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, the number is eight sixty-four, we're gonna use it...
It was nine sixty-four.
Correct.
It was?
It was, yes.
We moved money out of there.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, paid for stuff, right?
Correct, plans.
Yeah, we paid for stuff. Not like we moved and we paid for stuff.
Got it.
Gotcha. I don't think you could do that again. I don't think you could do that again.
I think you can, whatever that is.
She balanced it on...
I was trying to, no.
So you, you could remember that correctly, that we did have some money slated for it, but it's still in that capital project.
It's all under that big umbrella.
Which, we would use it, you know, if, if the cost of construction came under that, we would use it for that purpose.
Okay, this is something I don't understand, maybe. If you have a capital project budget, is that, is that held in our fund balance, or is that a different account?
It's a different account.
Okay.
You can have a reserve in your fund balance, like your Palville would be a reserve, but we actually put it in a capital project, but you can reserve it for some...
But when we create a capital project, we're actually gonna move it outside of our fund balance.
Correct. So you have, in your fund balance right now, you have a reserve for land acquisition, which is where that three hundred and whatever it is?
Oh, that's where it's sitting? Got it, okay.
So the intent would be to tap in if we needed it?
That's all outlined to you in this, right?
It is not, no.
Oh.
That's your, that's your operating budget, just for the fiscal year.
Oh, it's only our operating budget?
It wouldn't reflect any project ordinances that we have.
Okay.
'Cause those aren't done per year to year, those are done per project.
Okay.
Okay. Review of action items.
Let's see, sure, I didn't write them down, so I'm gonna have to go through them. One of them is to, to bring the trail standards back to the work session for vote with council. Next was to bring back the ordinance for the CUP, yes? Good, and then, let's see... Purchase policy is coming back, and then to review the, the ordinance for, for the ICD, to see whether or not it got rescinded.
AMT trail standard.
The AMT trail standard, and then the contracts. More discussion on the roads.
Is that the same as the AMT contract?
Well, there's two different roads, there's some work, there needs to be some legal research that needs to be done on the roads contract, and, and as well, looking at AMT to review our standards in correlation with our planner, looking at DOT standards versus our specs maybe.
And then continue discussion on the resident proposal investigation.
Procurement policy. Resolution of intent. Resolution of intent?
Resolution of intent, yes.
Golf cart ordinance.
And the golf court ordinance, yes, I think that's it.
Where did that come from? We talked about the golf.
It, that was in the, the budget, just the research, what we have, not the big.
Okay, um, council comments, anyone have volunteered to go first?
I think Christina here and Barbie, Chris, you know, for all the work that is done, you know, Chris on the budget, and you guys investigating all those things, and, uh, I think Melanie for, you know, being here, for your questions, probably give us, we're welcome. I have, I'm sorry, I'm a chemo brain, Mike, I don't remember the sheriff's, new sheriff's name, but I had a few minutes to speak.
Lauren Ramsey. Lauren Ramsey. Deputy Ramsey.
Welcome Lauren here, I had a few minutes to speak to her disperately, and she made a good impression, I think she'll be good, she's young, she's energetic, and, uh, I think she'll, she'll be good for us, and, uh, I think the meeting was, you know, pretty productive meeting, I think you seemed to be working okay, so I'm hoping we can continue on that, that's it.
Anyone else wanna go next?
I mean, I just want to thank staff, it's a good meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I think we got through a lot today, so I like when we actually put forward actions and make little improvements slowly, but surely, that was good. My apologies for missing the first budget work session, I forgot about a family event my son had, so my apologies for missing that and for coming in late. I do still have questions, I think we've talked about, with regard to policy, you know, legal services and contracts, so I know that that was removed mainly, probably because I was late and I didn't clarify, I guess I just assumed everyone would figure it was a follow-up from the last time, so if it's okay, I will put something together so that we can talk about it at the work session, and that's it.
Thank you, Robert?
I'm good, thank you, thank you, staff. Thank you, Barbie.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that, nice job as staff, I made some notes here, preparing the budgets is always a, a challenge and stuff, and you guys have done a great job of that, so I appreciate that. Rohit, thank you for being here, full-time, there's nothing better than having a full-time planner, and I think you're taking this position, and just hearing you talk today was awesome, so, thank you for being here, and thank you for, uh, taking on this role and stuff, because we, it's obvious we needed, I think we can all agree, a full-time planner that can get some updates on it and stuff.
I'm gonna jump in
Go ahead.
Right before you said that, I was gonna say, I'm looking, I was gonna say, I forgot to thank Rohit for being here, I thanked everybody else.
He meant to thank, what's his brain going on?
Thank, again, thank for all the work you've done.
And, again, I wanted to welcome Lauren, I've overnamed her, I've never named, because it's my daughter's name, Lauren Ramsey, very sweet, nice lady, I met her a couple days ago and stuff, and, uh, and had introduced her to me as, as he was on his way out, so we'll be missing him, but certainly welcome Lauren. The, I mentioned I attended the CRTPO meeting, there's another one tomorrow night, it's more for stuff that they got going on with connections up at Gastonia and stuff, so I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to make that or not, but they did confirm, they're eliminating a lot of the projects that we were talking about, the realignments and stuff, of course, those are gone because we have roundabouts and stuff, so they were cleaning up a lot of stuff, talked about critical intersections, and how, they, they did mention, I didn't get a chance, because it wasn't on the agenda, that the one road that I brought up, Christina, just for your information, and we should have something somewhere, is the intersection of Bonds Grove and Waxom Marvin, it's another critical intersection, and they mentioned any kind of drawings that we have, and I believe Timely Horn did some drawings years ago, he said, any of that kind of information that we could provide to Union County, I, I think would help that, that process, as they're trying to identify the critical intersections. Talked about the widening of 16, that they're not really gonna do anything until that's done, the insurance, you may know more than this about me, about the new developments with the two sidewalks, and how that can affect the cost of all these new ones coming in. Uh, let's see, what else? Nick, just to get a little personal, glad you're getting some positive news from your, your situation, prayers are continuing to come your way from, from all of us, and I'm glad to hear that things are improving, and we'll keep, uh, keep on praying for good news with that. And then finally, I'd like to mention that we are amongst we are amongst the three most powerful women in Union County.
What?
The three most powerful, and I didn't bring
Not the most, but three of the most.
I did bring the article, but they have three mentions here.
No.
Christina is one.
50 most powerful women in
Most powerful women in Union County, Kim Vanderburg and Mary Scoot, they were, I meant to bring it, but it was the three most it was the 50 most powerful women in Union County, and we have three of them sitting right here in this room.
And, and who else?
It was in Union County, we created
Wow, look at that.
The week before this.
We need to go celebrate those.
I'm kidding, power monger, so congratulations to them, it's always, you know, I mean, being on the list is, I'm on a different kinds of list, but, um, but congratulations to you, and, uh
Oh, Lisa, too? So did they just do this for everybody?
No, there's only 50.
There's 50.
It's 50.
There's 50, a lot of them, they weren't all, they weren't all in the dispal, as I remember.
There's like, there's like
There's different categories.
I, yes, I will bring in the article, because I saved it, and I will bring it in for you guys to, in fact, I think I took a photo of it
You did.
For, for you and sent it to you, I congratulated her, and she's like, for what? Because she doesn't get, she doesn't get this.
You sent it to me after we sent it to you.
Yeah, so, anyway, did you get the copy, do I need to still bring it to you? I'll bring it in, we should hang it up in the office.
Yes, we should hang it up in the office.
Oh, we have one.
You need to get it, you need to get it matted and framed and hang it up on the wall.
We're gonna have to listen to this for a while, hey.
Till the necklace comes out.
Actually, maybe you should just put it right above our
Anyways, with that, I need a motion to now move in. Okay.
One, one thing, not a council comment, really, but, uh, when you broke CRTPO, sort of hit me again, and I know, I don't know if I mentioned it before, but we may, have we notified CRTPO that Mary is now the author of it, because I get, I'm getting all the emails of meetings and stuff that they're working on, and things that
I actually
It'd have probably taken them six months to get that all cleared out.
She needs to do our state
What, what I can do is
Conflict of interest thing, so she can even be voting now, because right now she couldn't vote either, she was there.
I told, I asked them, and then they said, they said they'd done it in the fall, right, you guys that asked?
And I sent you the documentation too, should've sent you the
No, I didn't get any documentation yet.
Letting Bjorn know, I mean, you should
I sent the email where I said no by then.
No, I think it's Neil, Neil Burke, that's over there.
But you were supposed to follow up on that email that I had sent.
But you're right.
Remember that email that I had sent?
You have to file, if you have holdings with any company, public holdings, like stocks over $10,000
Well, he sent back a reply saying he had that all handled, so I, I didn't see any point in following that.
We'll double check tomorrow, but I did send that back in October, it's like two days after, two days after.
Now she's an author, and if Joe wasn't there, and she was there, and something was going on, she wouldn't be able to vote.
I'm just worried about the paperwork they keep telling me about, because every time they mention it, it's a state.
Every year I get it, I just say, it's same, same as last year, because it's like, yeah, once you fill it out the first time, unless you have all of a sudden bought properties in the area and stuff like, if you own properties, they wanna know where, you know, that kind of stuff. It's all related to roads, so, um, okay, anything else?
No, I'm pretty sure.
We've got time, just kidding.
Well, someone makes a motion for closed session, there's two different topics, and I think different people will be present, depending on which one you go first.
Okay, yep.
So first now
Personnel first, so that
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's still the same statute, right?
One's three, one's six.
Which ones, which ones which?
Well, we're gonna go into closed session.
I think three is
Three is attorney-client privilege, and six is personnel.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to move it closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6, personnel.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye. All right. Don't go for them.
What's that?
Nothing.
Oh.
Have one of these.
Dinner?
Dinner.